Meeting is open, this is a meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board and we will begin with a public comment. Public comment is for, excuse me, I've just had cataract surgery and I'm trying to adapt to reading glasses, it's not proving to be an easy thing to do. So now, there I can see you. If you have something that you want to tell the planning board, you want to talk to the planning board about that is not on the agenda, now is the time. If you have something that is on the agenda, that moment will come, but it's not now. Is there anyone who wants to talk on something not on the agenda? No? Okay. Um, oh, minutes. You have no?
Notices?
We don't have any minutes.
We don't have any minutes.
We have no minutes. Okay, then we can move on to the approval not required plans. We've got two of them tonight. One is for Sandwich Road Development LLC. It's a plan of land to divide a piece of land into one lot and one parcel located on Sandwich Road on the map, number seventeen oh one oh three two zero zero zero. Got a deadline of August twenty-six to have done this, and this actually is a simple thing, we're correcting a drafting error. Tom, is there anything else you want to say about that, or would the presenter want to speak on it?
Yes, ma'am. Because it was so recently before the board, and it's so minor as a drafting error, the applicant has requested that the board waive the fee for the A and R application, and that is a motion of the board. So if the board is so inclined to endorse the plan, they could make a motion somewhat to the extent, endorse the A and R plan for Sandwich Road Development LLC on Sandwich Road map seventeen oh one oh three two zero 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 dated December thirty twenty twenty, revised sixteen seventeen twenty-one without regard to buildability, and waive the fee due to the very minor change from a recently endorsed plan.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Okay, any discussion on that? Shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Okay, next. This is, the applicant is Paul Dupree. It's for a plan of land to divide a piece of land into two lots, both with frontage on Adam Ansett Road in East Falmouth, and it appears to have no issues. Is there anyone here to speak on that? No. Oh.
For the record, I'm Bob Amment, attorney for the applicant. Tom Bunker, who prepared the plan, is also here, and I think I agree with you, Madam Chairman, that there are no issues with this plan. Unless you have questions, we'll just let you endorse it.
Tom, did you want to say something? No? Any discussion on this? Any issues with it? Have you all had a chance to take a look at the map that we received? There's ample frontage on a public way, lot of room for the houses. Okay, we have a motion then to endorse.
I move that we endorse Paul Dupree's plan for division of land, piece of land into two lots with frontage on Adam Ansett Road map number seventeen oh one oh one six A zero zero eight.
Thanks, Pat. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all settled. Now, we have some public hearings. The first, there are four of them, and the first of the four is being presented by Eel Pond LLC, a site plan review application to allow the addition of a new walkway and steps to the rear entrance of the above referenced properties in Woods Hole, and to allow the restaurant to use in addition to the existing food market deli known as the Woods Hole Market and provisions eighty-seven Water Street without providing any off-street parking. It may not have been necessary to actually have this as a public hearing, but we have. Is there anyone, Bob, are you speaking on this?
Uh, Chair.
Oh, notices.
Notices, a public hearing was published on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and five of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you, Paul. Bob?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, for your record, I'm Bob Amment, Falmouth attorney. I represent Eel Pond Realty LLC. The manager is Jeff Parish, who is in the audience. Jeff and his wife, Colleen, have owned the Woods Hole Market for, it's about eleven years, and Market had been closed for three years, and they've made a go of it and greatly improved the building, and, but it's tough. It's been very tough running a grocery store in the Village of Woods Hole with no parking right at the store, and with the competition from the big stores here in town, and increasingly delivery services. So it's difficult, but it's what Woods Hole needs, needs that market, and it's what they want to do. And in order to make the market financially viable, they proposed to have a restaurant, which would have some synergy with the market in terms of purchase of food and so on. The restaurant would be based on the second floor, the first floor would remain a market. There'd be eighteen inside seats on the second floor, and an existing rear patio that is a lovely place overlooking Eel Pond would provide, I think it's twenty-eight seats. And then there's also seats available on the first patio at Eel Pond. Now, the deli operation, which has been in their restaurant, in the store for many years, has provided food, sandwiches that could be made for people when they come, and people have been able to sit outside, and for the last, I think it's seven or eight years, on that second floor deck, but it hasn't been, hasn't met the definition of a restaurant. But in fact, between all those spaces and some spaces inside the back of the store, there are sixty-nine seats. The proposal is to have eighteen new seats inside, reduce the rest of the seating, and have a total of sixty-seven seats, a couple less, that would be available for a restaurant, that is, a real table service for breakfast and for dinners, and then at lunch, the deli operation would use those spaces. There's an awful lot of support for this proposal. A petition at the store has already garnered four hundred and fifty signatures, which I gave to the board earlier today. There's some very thoughtful letters that have been submitted from people who are acknowledging the importance of the market to the village and like this idea for the restaurant use. So, a change of use that requires more than five parking spaces under the town's parking regulations requires site plan review. That's true even if you aren't making any change to the, to the building. There is a very small change that's to occur here on this floor plan. You see, I'm identifying over here, there'll be a new deck outside the rear entrance, and that's really just a safer deck than exists today, but there are no other changes to the building proposed. But a site plan review is required, we think, because under the town parking regulations, you need more parking for a restaurant than you need for a grocery store. So under the calcu, under the parking regulations, we needed site plan review. We're also going to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit because we can't provide the parking that is required for a restaurant, but the board of appeals has the authority under the zoning bylaw to waive parking requirements or reduce parking requirements, and so we're asking that of, of the board. So, a site plan review that's before you, but there are no changes to the site whatsoever, and we can't provide parking, but it's Woods Hole, and none of the restaurants, almost none, have parking in Woods Hole. And there's a lot of public transportation to Woods Hole, there's public parking at the Steamship Authority, there's a lot of street parking that's further down Water Street and MBL Street and North Street, and a lot of people who are customers of the restaurant, of the store, and will be of the restaurant, are people who work in the village, where the institutions, of course, do provide parking for their staff. So the use really is up to the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board will probably make some kind of a recommendation, but the bottom line is that this is to help make the grocery store financially sustainable for hopefully years to come. I would like to note that this will be a second-floor restaurant primarily, and it is a historic building, and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board has already, after hearings in Boston, agreed to that this use is allowed without the requirement to have second-floor handicap access by an elevator, but there is a requirement for some restaurant seating on the first floor, so there will be. Happy to answer. Any questions that the board has?
Do we have questions? No?
No.
I got one comment. I thought the drawings were very well done, using a very difficult site, and it was very in a way of improving that area. I thought the concept was well presented. We have some issues we need to deal with, but I think that the concept, I thought, was very good.
Thank you. Thank you. We do, of course, have a site plan, and that was up, if presumably I can figure out how to get back to it here.
Paul, did you want to name your issues?
Sorry?
Do you want to name those issues? No? Jim, Bob, John?
No, I think it's good. You know, I think anything we can do to keep that market going is a good thing for Woods Hole.
It is a good thing. It's interesting about the second floor. Right, it's a good market. So I have a note here from Tom that we have some engineering issues.
Well, if I may, so, staff, it was our very first meeting with Aladi Ogore, our returning acting interim building commissioner, and we talked about the fact that it meets some threshold for a site plan review, but there's not really anything that's being changed from the site, from the planning board's perspective. Aladi wanted to make sure that the deck that was added was properly done and constructed, and that there wasn't any encroachment upon the Chapter ninety walkway out back. So the plan was, we're tweaked a little bit to resolve those sort of things. So from our perspective, it's one of those things that requires site plan review because of the change of use, but there's, there really aren't any, any site plan issues. So with that, and while the board typically directs the staff to prepare a positive motion, we think with what we have here, that the board, if they're comfortable, they could likely vote to approve it this evening, and we've got sort of a draft motion put together to that effect. But if you want to hear from anyone in the public, if anybody's here to speak to that, we'll circle back around to.
Hear from the public?
Because it's a public hearing.
Well, it is a public hearing, so maybe we would be better off continuing it, but if you would prepare a positive motion, because it's a really good project and we'd like to move it along as best we can within our normal framework.
Okay.
So we'll continue it till the twenty-fourth.
No, we have to hear from the public right now.
Oh, is there anyone here who wants to speak on it? No?
We, we do have a motion that we could.
We do?
Yeah.
Well, that is if you wanted to make a motion to approve, but if the board wants us to come back with that.
If we wanted to approve it tonight, but it's really, it is the first public hearing, it'd be better to leave it till the twenty-fourth, but I'm sure, well, we'll see what happens then. But, yeah, so we don't need a motion now, we'll continue.
All right, so continue to the twenty-fourth, and the staff will return with a positive recommendation.
Paul?
I'm not sure why we have to postpone this. If we're all in agreement, why don't we just approve it tonight?
We easily could and probably would, but the thought that Pat has is that we really ought to allow for the public to participate and have a full opportunity.
No, we did, it's on the agenda, so.
That's all you want, is one?
That's all.
Oh, then let's go ahead.
I'm very much in favor of this, however, we have made this mistake before, and the reason why we don't approve them the same night is because it's come up and bit us in the past, and I'm only worried, not worried about this at all. This is great, but just procedurally, there's a reason why we don't do it the same night, and it's caused us severe difficulty in doing it and missing something. So I think one more time would be good, and we're all in favor of it, and let's go.
That's what we're doing, okay. So we're all set on that. Bob?
My only comment is that this is not a situation where it would be a hardship for us to wait two weeks for a decision, but I, apropos of the comments that have been made, I think you should reserve the right to make decisions without continuing it in cases where it is important, but we can certainly live fine with it. Thank you.
I think we have that.
Yeah, we always have that.
Without reserving it, right. But thank you.
We always have that availability, but this is good. Everyone agrees, this is wonderful. We're good.
Okay. So we have a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay, second?
We don't have a motion, you just made it.
Okay.
Not all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, Tom, if you would.
We'll be back on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, our next applicant is Joe, not going to pronounce this correctly, Sade. Site plan review application to construct a canopy over new fueling pumps, demolish existing vacant building, and expand existing parking located at six and ten North Main Street, right at the intersection of Depot and North Main Street. Who is here to speak to that?
That'd be Hal Tuba.
Notices?
Paul, notices?
Notice that a public hearing for this project was published on seven twenty-three twenty-one, and forty butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you.
This is site plan review.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, member of the board. For the record, my name is Hal Tuba, I'm a consulting engineer in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing the applicant, Joe Sade, on this application. What you have in front of you, this is a site plan review and application to modify an existing site. The site, the subject site involves two parcels. Thank you. The six North Main Street and ten North Main Street. Six North Main Street is this little parcel to the left of the sheet, it has frontage on North Main Street, it has an existing vacant building, and the parcel is approximately six thousand square feet, it's located in the B-two district.
Could you just hit the zoom button a couple times and make that picture a little bigger for folks? There's a plus button at the top typically.
Okay, let me go back to.
on it, and ten North Main Street is the existing gas station at the corner of Depot and North Main Street. It has an existing building, approximately two thousand square feet, that is being used for car repairs. It has two existing fuel pumps to the front and one to the side, used for diesel. This parcel is about fifteen thousand square feet and also located in the B-two zoning district. Both parcels are in historic overlay district also. The proposal is to, I think it's sheet number five, let me double check.
It's been a hard year for the machine, too.
You can click and drag and center it if you try. There you go, there you go. Click and drag, that's how you do it. There you go.
So the, the proposal is to demolish the existing building on six North Main and construct a three-pump canopy, a canopy over three new fueling pumps in the center of the lot, right here. Take that diesel pump on the side, demolish all the three pumps, and construct three pumps in the middle with, with the canopy, overhead steel canopy. Demolish the existing building on six Main, close access, currently access to the site has four open curb cuts, three on North Main Street and one on Depot Street, right off Depot Street at this, at this location. The, the proposal is to close two of the curb cuts and reduce the curb cuts, the existing curb cuts, from forty feet to thirty-one feet, this one is about forty-nine, I believe, and this curb cut here is also about forty, close to fifty feet. Reduce it to twenty-eight, just enough so we can get the truck in and out of the site, as you can see the template that is shown on the, on the site layout plan. Also, including any site modifications or improvements would be landscape. You can see we have landscape all around the perimeter of the site, and also would be lighting improvements. Also, we propose stormwater improvements, that's part of site plan review requirements too. There was some, I know the town engineer had some comments on this, you'll see, you have referrals in your package, we have to address those, but part of the site is to provide stormwater management. Currently, there's nothing on site. All the runoff from the site sheet flows in the westerly, easterly, and westerly direction, most of it in the easterly direction to North Main Street without any treatment. So currently, there's nothing, it's all open, there's four curb cuts, there's no control to the traffic, there's no really defined landscape, there's some trees in between the two lot lines. So it'll be lighting improvements, landscape improvements, stormwater improvements, will be traffic improvements in terms of, of site circulation. As I, I said previously, we will be closing two curb cuts and reducing the, the width of two existing curb cuts by almost twenty-five, thirty percent. We did submit the site plan review application, you did circulate that site to the, to the other departments, you do have some comments on your, I'm, I'm going to go into the comments of engineering, there's some lengthy comments, but we think most of it is, is, could be addressed. I did talk to Mr. Bott and Mr. Karnick before, we had some informal meetings just over the site plan, and I did some, I did get some input from them, and, and very helpful input. We did incorporate that into the site, except maybe one that I'm sure Mr. Bott will be talking about this tonight. We did have some comments from the fire department and sewer, I believe, and zoning. We will be filing with zoning for a special permit and for a variance for the setback of the canopy. We asked, the canopy will be sited eight feet from the proper line with the setback, I believe, is thirty feet in the front. But once we get through the site plan review, I believe we will be filing with zoning. Also, I would mention that I did meet with Historic, and they did approve the canopy and the, the architectural of the canopy, and I believe you do have a certificate of appropriateness in the, in the file. I would probably go to the, I believe the canopy would be, probably sheet twelve or, keep going down. Yes, it's, this is the canopy. It's a hip roof canopy, will be architectural shingle roof, it was approved by, would have a column with, with brick to tie it to the existing building, and it was approved by, by Historical. I do have some rendering at the, at the last sheet to show what the site would look like with the improved landscape and the proposed canopy. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, before we get to the board questions, Tom, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, Hal, if you don't mind going back to the site plan that shows the landscaping and the truck template, and just give me a couple of clicks on that. So Hal and I met prior to filing the plan, and the things that we had talked about particularly on this plan was with the landscaping, the property is across the street from a residential development, and under the zoning, if you were building this today, you couldn't, because the zoning doesn't allow it. So we wanted to do the best that we could to, to put adequate landscaping, sufficient landscaping on the site, because as you come down into town, you see this right as you approved Depot Street and, and Main Street. So we wanted to sort of have a little bit more of a, of a better visual than what's there right now, and Hal pointed out, it's just open curb cut and, and stuff all over the place. So the landscaping plants, I had suggested to, to put in ones towards the street that were salt tolerant, because it's clearly a very busy spot, it's going to get a lot of road salts, and the remaining plantings around to look at the option to put pollinator type of species there. So we get something that is, that is colorful, something that is screening, but also something that has an extra duty of creating some, you know, food and things like that for pollinators and birds and stuff like that. So those are all pretty easy things to do. There's actually four extra parking spaces on the plan that's what's required by zoning, so we've got a couple parking spaces to play with, and, and some of the parking spaces don't quite work size-wise. So Hal's got that, he's retooling the plan, and we'll see that the next time he comes back. The entrance way, and if you can move that label out of the way so we can see, so the northern entrance ramp, right there at Depot Street, is in and out, and what I had suggested, because we've got Main Street, we've got Depot Street, we've got all those things converging there, that that northern entrance by Depot Street be in only. If you look and you see the arrows that take you around the building, they're on the right side. So if that entrance way was one-way in only, it would eliminate some potential turning motions where there's a lot of activity and less of a line of sight coming out. Hal discussed it with his client and said the client would prefer not to do that, but that was our recommendation, in order to channel folks in that way and have everybody come out. To do that, maybe tighten up the driveway a little bit more as well. So the principal issues that we had were screen it the best you can from the neighbors, let's try to minimize the conflicting turning motions by having that northern driveway coming into Depot Street in only, and if it's possible, look at the potential for some solar on the site. There's a lot of parking spaces towards the back, depending on the orientation and things like that, you know, we're always looking for that opportunity, as we point out, in our, in our solar bylaw. There are some technical comments back from engineering as well regarding stormwater, but it's a significant improvement from what it is, and I think, you know, we'll keep working on, on getting it to the point where it's, it works for the location, because it is a very prominent location, and it could use an awful lot of love right now. No offense to the folks who own it, but at their time.
We're all familiar with it. Tom, could you say why it would be against zoning now?
Zoning doesn't allow this use within, I think it's five hundred feet of residential properties, and across the street is general residential.
So its issue is the gas station and used car lot beside residences is why it wouldn't be allowed now?
Yep.
Okay, are there questions from the board? Jim?
I had a question, you mentioned additional lighting. Is this lighting all designed to be specifically downlighting only and nothing, not going up to the sky?
Correct.
up to the sky and not going into the neighbor's property?
Correct.
That's really important, this is historic district.
Right.
And then...
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fox, we did submit the lighting plan with the application that shows no spillage of lights either.
But also downlighting, not going up in the sky.
It is down, yes.
And then, on the, in and out, I happen to just be outside the butters list, but I, I don't see how you could use that, those gas pumps with one entrance on the north only being one way. I don't see how you could get, you'd be driving around in circles inside the site.
Right, that's the reason.
You would force somebody to go out and drive, and they won't do it, because, you know, we got the, we got a bike path down the street, we got a crossing there, the depot, this is a really, really busy site, and people, no matter where you tell them to go, they're going to go wherever they want anyway, so it's, that's a very, very difficult site. I don't think you could change the direction of that, people drive, if I was coming out, I'm not going to drive all the way around the building to go out the other way? I don't think that could happen. Is that what you're, we're suggesting, have it be out only?
Right, but at this time, I think with this plan, Tom suggested that would be in only, with this plan will be right in, right turn out only, so you can make a right turn to get out, and I think that's what we would like to see, that's otherwise, like you said, you have to drive all around the...
I would probably take it anyway, even if the sign said it didn't, so.
And I don't think the right turn is too detrimental, Tom, I'll tell you, because that intersection with depot is, I think the intersection with depot is, it's a stop, there's a stop intersection there, so making a right turn, I don't think it's detrimental to the intersection coming out of that driveway.
Right now, isn't it all the way open?
It is all the way open.
Free-for-all.
Yes. Yes, it's all the way open from this corner of the property, all the way to here, basically. So, we're closing probably sixty percent of the, of the opening and also restricting the movement to be right turn only, you can't make a left turn there, so.
The last thing I wanted to say is, I almost wrote a letter to the new and old building inspector asking what the hell's going on with this property, it's been sitting there for like five years with nothing going on it, and what's going on? I'm so glad to see you're coming and doing something with it finally, I'm glad to see this.
John?
That was my comment, people entering from the south, they would have to go all the way around the building in order to exit again, it didn't seem practical to me, so that's, that was my comment.
Okay. Pat?
When I'm looking at the pathway, the gray pathway of the traffic there, the right-hand column for the overhead covering is in the pathway.
Right.
And, so I'm, I'm not sure how to...
Are you, I'm sure, I'm sorry.
Go down just a little bit. Okay, right there. That's, that is shown as a column, I believe, for the canopy.
No, ma'am, the column is right there, that's the column, yes.
The overhang, so it's coming under the canopy.
Under the canopy.
Oh, okay.
Canopy is fourteen, fourteen and a half feet high.
You're looking for burial.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's up in the air.
Mm-hmm.
So, trucks won't be able to, well, delivery truck will, just make it.
That's what that gray is, that's the truck template for the truck delivery.
But, once the truck goes through there and comes, if he follows the directions and comes out the exit, he's going to have to go down the Woods Hole Road.
Yeah.
He can't make a hard left to come down the side of the green, so where's he going to go? So it...
Down the Mill Road?
Yeah, that's what will happen, or he'll make a turn into Sitters Pond, or...
It could be either way, that's why we're showing a template this way, so he could be coming in from the south and leaving from the north.
What do they do now?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not...
Just because I, I drive this every morning, and I do it at six o'clock in the morning, and this morning and almost every morning, there's these giant oil trucks that are coming to Martha's Vineyard, and they swing way out of the left-hand lane and they take it over. This is one of the most dangerous things, and anything to would make give it some, I mean, they, that's a really tough corner on Locust Street, even to make that turn.
It is, yeah, but that's...
It's not going to get any, but this is, this is already here, it's pre-existing, we can't do anything about it.
No, we can't do anything about it.
But that's, that is a very, very bad corner, and I don't think you can make it, this use is already here, it's not going to change anything. And also, this is the only gas station, there's no gas stations in Woods Hole anymore, right?
No.
And there's no place to buy gas even for a boat or anything, we're getting really hard to get petroleum products anywhere around here, this is kind of critical to our town.
Have you addressed any of the concerns from the director butters at One Locust? Have they been in contact with you?
I, I only had a contact from Ms. Freitas, I believe.
Yeah.
And I did advise her to contact the town planner or the planning board, and if she has any comments, to send them either in writing, by, send a letter or an email so you can have a record, and I did speak with her on the phone, and I told her this is not, I can promise you the word, but this is a public hearing, you have the right to appear before the board and state your concerns. I did listen to her concerns, some of her concerns, I think they're pretty easy, we can accommodate. One thing is the sign, I'm not sure we can do that, because there's no place to put the sign. She was concerned that the sign was too close to her property, she wanted on the other side of the intersection. I'm not sure if this is going to work with the being on the other side of the intersection, but...
I wonder if, I'd like to stop you for a minute, she did write the letter, we've received it, is she here?
Oh, okay.
Yes, so she can speak herself.
Great, so that's a public hearing.
Be good to have her letter or her comments as part of the record here in, yeah. You need to come to the microphone and give your name, please, and then go ahead.
Well, our building is a lovely building, built in eighteen oh six, it's a lovely historic building. Unfortunately, they didn't have zoning back then, and it's very, it's, it's close to the lot line, it's right there, and it does have residential apartments in there, so we're concerned, we're, we're so happy that finally after D's has fallen to the ground, that it's going to be gone, because if they weren't going to maintain it, it has to be gone. The problem is, we would like a little bit more buffer for the back of our apartments, and maybe instead of little teeny bushes, maybe the arborvitus can go along our property line also, that would be nice, because it would give us a little bit of a sound buffer. We also have a little concern about the lighting, because it is a residential building, we, we don't want bright lights fourteen feet up in the air shining down into homes, you know. The other concern, if, if they could push that parking back or maybe get a little less parking, I think there's eighteen parking places now, they didn't have that many before. It says they added six, but there really isn't, there's hardly any parking there right now. The back is just dirt right now, the back of the gas station and the back of D's. So, if they could give us a little bit more natural space between us and them, that would be wonderful. And the sign, we have on the front of our building here, you know, the state has to have Route twenty-eight sign, boom, right in front, and we have Locust Street sign, boom, right in front. If we have another sign here right in front, it's like, whoa, we're full of signs. If this sign could be maybe in that green area, where people could see it coming down Depot and North Main Street, that would be a little more aesthetically pleasing to us, and then people will see our pretty historic building when they come down into Falmouth, you know, we overlook the Main Street in the green, it's, it's a pretty building. Was there anything else? I think that's, that's pretty much, we would like them to be able to fix the place, we're, we're for repairing what's there, because it's pretty bad. Oh, our other concern is, we didn't see that they're testing the soil that's in the back before they cover and pave it, and there's been a lot of car stuff going on there through the years, hopefully nothing, hopefully nothing wrong has happened, but we would like to make sure of that in case there's some runoff that's going into, we also own that back, back part, that's part of our property too. So, we're pretty much the only abutter besides the car dealer. So, we would just like to make sure there's no runoff that's been going on and that they put a nice natural buffer, and it will be beautiful.
You also mentioned limits in the hours of operation.
My husband would like to, I'm sorry.
You also, you were looking for your other points?
Yeah.
You mentioned limits to the hours of operation and the amount of noise.
Yeah, just to make sure that it doesn't turn into a seven-eleven that's open twenty-four hours or something like that, you know, I, I just don't want them to have people there day and night, because it's been pretty peaceful as it is.
Thank you.
My name is Livio Freitas. Actually, everything she wrote in this paper, I, I thought it was pretty good, she, she kind of went kind of fast and didn't go through all the points here. In the picture, it shows a property as a warehouse of some sort, like a big old white building. That's a historic house, and it's the only house now, the gentleman that I mentioned about the house across the street, that's the house right next to it. We're not against, I think it's a very nice improvement to the area, especially that building that's falling down like the gentleman mentioned about. Our concern is like a chain link fence, I, it looks like that it has chain link fence on the drawing, maybe not, but it looks to me like it does. So, instead of a chain link fence, I would rather have a wood fence, and in front of the wood fence, put some arborvitus, where eventually, we don't see so much of the gas station from our home. And this area here, if it can be wider, because the house, like she mentioned, it sits right on the, on the lot line, and if I only have like three feet of space, you know, that's going to be class, it's going to sound quite a bit to us, you know? When you go around the back of our house, on the left side is a big parking lot for our home, and along that side too, I would like to see a wood fence also with some arborvitus also growing. I am in favor, I think that's going to be a really nice job, but it's just a few little things that makes a historic house not so nice, if it, you know, if it goes like that. About the lighting, I'm concerned about having a light going on all night long and you're trying to sleep with all these bright lights over there shining on the cars. At night, they're going to be closed anyway, I don't see why all these lights are necessary, you know, near my home, you know? So, that's basically about, when they mentioned about the sign, it's, what I, I see is that I have a tree right on that corner, and the tree is pretty big, I don't want to take it down because of the noise, a lot of noise in that area, and so that tree is kind of good for us, I don't want to take the tree down. So, they, nobody's going to see the sign coming from Woods Hole, they're going to see the sign coming from the other end, but whatever, you know, I just feel like my house has all kinds of massive signs like born and Falmouth and this and that, you know, in front of the house covering my windows, you know? So, I, I'm in favor, I think that's a very nice design, it's, and also it mentions about six parking space, but then again, mentioned about eighteen parking space. The other thing is that she mentioned about the trash can, the...
Dumpsters.
The dumpster.
Yeah, the dumpster, you know, I don't want any runoff into my house, or oil or whatever. So, if we can work it out somehow, you know, make it good for everybody, I appreciate it, you know?
Okay, I don't think Pat's next. Pat, thank you.
Yeah, actually, you don't have to worry, I think, about a chain link fence, because it calls out a proposed six-foot-high cedar privacy fence, but there are two different kinds of fencing shown there, one is a stockade, and then in the drawings, it's boards across, so I'm not quite sure which is going to be, but it's a wood fence, so. The other thing too, that when you asked about the dumpsters, that's to the back, it's by battles, and it's enclosed.
Our, that gap is our property.
There's also...
Oh, I'm sorry.
People up and around.
Yes, that's what you mentioned, right. Okay.
And he was pretty nice about it and stood our concern, and he said that to approach it, anyway, that will work for everybody, like bringing the...
Sir, if you want to speak further, I think we've understood what you have to offer, but if you want to speak further each time, you need to go to the microphone, yeah.
For the folks at home.
My wife spoke with the engineer, he seemed to be a real nice person and understanding our concern. He said that he was going to try to work it out according to these things, because we sent this letter to him too, you know, of you, and he said that he was going to work it out. So, I am in favor, I think there will be improvement, whatever you guys decide, but take me in concern, and, you know, my concern, because my building is a historic building, it's the only one now left on that corner, you know? And I already have a problem with trucks going back and forth, but there's nothing I can do about it, just like he mentioned.
Yeah, I think, I think we understand your position, and there's time for you to get together with the planners to, to work it out. They, they understand where your issues are, it's a nice clear letter, they look as if they're workable things, and there'll be a solution for them.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I have a question, I'm very familiar with the site, but there's a, is there a community sign on the north corner of this that talks about all the businesses on Depot Street, or is that on public property? There's a sign there, a ladder sign with, you know, is that on your property or...
It wouldn't be on our property, it went on the north.
Well, you would have shown it if it was.
Yeah.
Because there's a really big sign on the northern corner of that parcel, it tells about all, up, everything up the road and this way, but I don't see it here, I would have thought it was on your property, maybe it isn't, I'm just...
It's hard to tell, because it's all open, so it's not, it's not on our property.
Because you're, if that's the case, then you already have, I just want to get the signage worked out.
I, I think, I can work with Tom on that, I mean, I understand, I told Peggy, I understand her concerns, and I can, I'll try to work with some of them, but because this is a public hearing, I wanted to get your input first to see what directions we're heading, because, you know, otherwise...
Good, I'm glad, thank you. I have a question, why so many spaces? And I see that the spaces that are very close to the Freitas property are labeled as used cars, is that permanent parking? Is this, are you turning this into a used car lot?
Yes, part of it will be, I think there'll be five spaces, four or six spaces will be dedicated for, for used car sales.
Is that a change of use?
It's already there.
Yeah, they repair...
There's a building there.
They repair and sell.
They repair and sell vehicles there now.
That's not quite the same thing. Paul?
I have a couple of concerns, I think that Mr. Freitas raised some very valid points that should be considered. I've often thought that the state should take that corner, even though it's a historic building, and smooth out that curve. As noted previously, that's a very dangerous curve, and the trucks coming around there are, you know, they don't really slow down, but that's beyond our purpose here today. I think the biggest problem here that I've seen, and I, I was there today for service, by the way, is the old building needs to come down, the place needs an up, update, it's a very important corner, and it doesn't look that way, so I, I think what you're doing is very, very good. As far as the access goes, I think one of the best things you can do is cut down a lot of the curb cuts, because when you go in, you're not sure where to go, and they're too open, I think it's very good to cut it down to two. As far as the, the direction goes, if you're coming down twenty-eight, and you see the gas station, you're inclined to pull right in where it is, get gas, and then continue on down to Woods Hole. So, if you miss that first turn, you're not, it's not clear you have another chance to get into the station, because you're coming around a curve. So, I, I think it's a good idea to have two entrances and exits in those areas and eliminate the ones that you've eliminated. I think that would be a huge improvement on that corner.
Any other board member? Then I, I would like to make a comment also on the aesthetics of it, it is an important corner, and anyone who lives here is really familiar with the eyesore that's coming down, and glad that it's coming down, this is going to be a really... and glad that it's coming down, this is going to be a really good improvement, and would like to help you make it as big an improvement as possible. And changing it to having it a sort of a used car lot there, close to the historic building, might not be the best you can do aesthetically. If you have extra spaces, you might not need them, you might be able to find a different way to do that, to make the additional buffer with the taller trees, so that rather than a linear fence, you've got the softness of the trees, and being really careful not to hurt the one good tree that's right there as you go about making the changes. I'm glad the Historic Commission worked with you and got a hip roof onto your umbrella there over the gas tanks, but something needs to be done better with the way that that corner is now being managed, and how close it is to the house. I think we all have a chance now to really be careful in looking at that site before you're next before us, so that we can really be sure that we're understanding what the plan is, we all take an interest in it, and I'm glad that these improvements are going to be made. Anything else we want to contribute before we...
Anyone else from the public?
Ah, from the public who wants to speak, anyone else want to talk on this? No? Yes?
Can you please keep me in consideration, like whatever the site to do over there? Take my side of the place also, like, you know, doing all the work, and the way that would be pleasing for everyone for the gas station, but also for me, because my house is important to me, I owned it for, I don't know, thirty years or something, and I love that place. So whatever decision is made, can you keep me in consideration about, you know, the distance in between the parking lot and the back of my home, and also the, right now there is a...
The percalway, you're doing just the side, both sides.
Yeah, two sides.
Let me reassure you, the abutters are always kept involved, and we have asked the planners to, and he's assured you also, that he intends to be working with you, so yes, you will be involved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just what I heard, is it sounds like we need to beef up the barrier, I don't know about changing the space there, both places are non-conforming, sitting on property lines, neither one conforms to setbacks, you know, that's, that's a tough thing when your house is on somebody else's property line, you're too close to. But maybe bigger trees, heavier fence, make sure the downlighting's there, every, you've got a lot of comments that there should be a way, that working with staff that you could...
Well, it's not just downlights, the lights that are planned are fifteen feet, and they're gonna shine right into the second store there.
They can't, that's the question I asked, I specifically asked them if they're gonna be shining on the other property, he said no.
Picture the size shade you need.
I know, but that was my first question to him, and he said no, that, that's exactly what I asked.
We do have a lighting plan and application with the intensity of the footage, just don't take my word for it, look at the plan, and you can enforce that once you've, I'm sure you have zoning enforcement with lighting in the town of Falmouth. And also...
Zoning enforcement's a different question right now.
Through my discussions with Peggy, she did mention an eight-foot fence, and I'm not sure if in the town of Falmouth you're...
It needs a permit.
Just a permit.
A six-foot fence doesn't need a permit, an eight-foot fence does. Not from zoning board or just...
Structurally, it has to...
Okay, so this is something we can look at, maybe an eight-foot fence and some arbor vartes, and I do wanna mention that the buffer along her house varies from ten feet to five at the narrowest point, so she has an average of seven and a half feet, which, right now, currently, the building is right on the property line, so, so right now, you don't really have any, any...
The building...
I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, wait.
She, right now, there's no, any, I understand, we're gonna work out the details with her.
It's gonna work, that's what we wanted to hear.
Because we did have that in mind, we're just not paved all the way to the property line, we understand that, so. But I have to look at the layout and whether we can get the two parking spaces, because we need a twenty-four-foot aisle between the parking, and that's really, we're at minimum, so if we need to lose the entire row of parking, that's about eight parking spaces, nine, and honestly, we're doing this so we can expand the parking lot, if we're not gaining, the parking spaces would be, wouldn't be feasible for the project, because we're not increasing the intensity of the existing gas station with the pumps, or the retail, or, I mean, the, the garages or the repairs, still the same, the increase, we're looking to expand the parking so we can have a better, safer traffic circulation on sites. Right now, everything's cramped on that piece of property and, you know, so. But I'll, I'll take a look at the site.
Take a look at it, because seventeen compared to that building isn't much.
And I'm sure we'll work it through Tom somehow, and through them, and we can come up with something, but we wanted to get your input and what directions we're going, I see this as a positive change to the site, and there's an opportunity here to work with the applicant, I believe, so.
Just a question for the town planner, that lane, is it required to be twenty-four feet, or it has to be twenty-four feet?
Two-way traffic, twenty-four foot.
Okay, so there isn't any way that that could get narrowed down to twenty? Okay?
And unfortunately, that is in the zoning. There are places where the dimensions for a parking lot and driveways are in a regulation, but here in Falmouth, they're in the zoning, and we'd actually talked about trying to take those out of the zoning and put them into a regulation to give us a bit more flexibility to it. And I wanna say that someone told me that Barnstable attempted to do that, and it didn't go well, and I'm not quite sure why, but we're, we haven't taken that step to try to move them out of zoning, just to give some flexibility for that.
Because I'm trying to think back to CVS, CVS parking lot, because they, it was gonna be a lot narrower than it is, and we made them increase it, and I can't remember what the numbers were, what we started with, and what we made them do, but I don't remember it being twenty-four feet.
Well, currently, based on what's proposed, there are sixteen spaces required, and there are twenty spaces provided. So we think we've got some flexibility with the number of spaces. Just on a tight site like that, with the building that already exists orienting the parking spaces and having the travel lanes, so there's, you know, there's, there's, there's some, some spaces to, in play, just how do we go about those? And in discussing things with Hal prior to the hearing, we're bringing this back on September fourteenth, so we've got a little time for him to sharpen his pencil and look at what they can do.
Okay, so I think we need to move to continue?
Correct.
If we could.
I move that, we continue this.
Wait, if you, excuse, if you do, you gotta go back up there, we're ready to move on.
It's just so I know, all these parking spaces is going to be for used cars, that's going to be for sale, or what is it gonna be, is it gonna be like fixing cars or what? You know, I just, just so I know, you know, if it's gonna be like just used cars parking lot, or what?
If I may?
Tom?
So on the plans that are presented, they have ten parking spaces that are required because of the size of the building, and six parking spaces that are called out for used car sale display.
All right, thank you.
I have one suggestion. The, the problem with our setback is that, that is two-way where all those twelve cars are parked next to our house. What about if that was just one-way? Then we could have a little more of a green buffer.
I think there'll be a lot of suggestions, but this isn't the time to work that out. I really appreciate the position that you're in, and I'm glad that there's an assurance that you will be worked with, you'll be included in it, and so will the town planner, so that there's time now, is it the fourteenth, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Between now and then to make some changes and get this better. John?
And they're welcome to come back on the fourteenth.
Oh, yes, of course you are, so you'll be here again throughout.
Just one other comment, the problem is with parking, there's a twenty-four-foot setback from the building on their side, and so if they have any parking at all, that's what he mentioned, if they move it at all, they lose all the parking, not just one or two spots. And, and the parking there is pre-existing, and you have a, we're getting rid of a non-conforming, pre-existing building with parking that's right up on your parking line already, so this is actually improving.
We're moving on.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Move to continue.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll see you all on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck with that, it's a good project, we like it. Okay, the next thing here on the agenda, the applicant, oh, reading glasses.
We all have to do that.
I know, and it's just, it's a new habit, I don't have it yet. Partition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughn and Todd Rain Jr., trustees of OBR Realty Trust, preliminary plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at 336 Old Barnstable Road in East Falmouth lots two to six, Adeline's Way. We've, we've seen this before, oh, do we have notices?
Yes, Edie. Notice for this public hearing was published on seven twenty-three, twenty-one, and twenty abutters were notified by regular mail.
Do we have any abutters here? We do, okay. So would you like to go ahead?
I would, thank you, Madam Chairperson. For the record, my name is Michael Borselli, from the firm of Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. I'm joined tonight by Brian Wall, attorney representing the applicant. You're correct in saying that this is familiar to you, we have been before you in the past. We submitted an approval not required plan and application that you endorsed that would have created two lots with frontage on the existing road, Old Barnstable Road, and those two lots had adequate access, frontage, and lot width. We're here tonight under a preliminary subdivision plan, sort of the next step in the process, to show you what we're planning for the rest of the land, get your input, and ultimately file a definitive subdivision that we hope is very similar to the preliminary plan. So I'll briefly go over the project. The parcel has frontage on Old Barnstable Road, there's an existing single-family dwelling, and that's located in this location with a outbuilding in the rear. If you remember, there is on record a planned residential development or a so-called cluster subdivision that created lots, there's a paper road, Adeline's Way, and those lots are laid out and identified on the Falmouth Assessor's records. We, we wanna change that, that was a six-lot subdivision with open space, and we are before you tonight to apply for four lots. The two lots that you approved under the approval not required plan are virtually the same, they are identified as Lot One, that is shown here where I'm circling with the mouse, and Lot Two, which is here. And then we created a roadway with a cul-de-sac to provide adequate frontage for two additional lots that also have the adequate frontage, lot width and area. And then at the rear of the lot is a parcel that is not a building lot, which is the balance of the land, which has some materials deposited on there that the applicant is mandated to clean up and restore. The intent of the subdivision is to create the lots, this is a family property with competing interests, let's say, but the goal is to get the land that's available and can meet the subdivision requirements, saleable, and that would be two, four lots, and that would help fund the cleanup of the landfill that's in the back. The pavement and the geometry of the roadway are in keeping with subdivision requirements in your code, section three hundred, with the width alignment and grade section, and there's drainage proposed, water, water main, all the typical underground utilities, and with your feedback, we'll come back at some point in the future, refining this preliminary plan and submitting a definitive plan with even more detail. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and so is Mr. Attorney Wall is also here to answer questions.
Tom, did you wanna point out the issues?
Yes, so as we've sort of talked about with some of the folks prior to, who stopped by, so this is a preliminary plan, and a preliminary plan isn't, doesn't, is, isn't what they're going to build. So under Massachusetts general law, they file a preliminary plan, and they have, we have forty-five days to address that. From that time, they have seven months to come back with a definitive plan, and we see the definitive plan will have ninety days for that, because there's a hundred and thirty-five days in total to approve a plan, but it can be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the board, which it typically is. So in this case, we're looking at sort of giving them our best ideas that they can put into the definitive plan to bring back to. So the thing that Mr. Borselli and I had talked about on this plan is, one of the things that stands out to me is the cul-de-sac, when it turns to the left and comes down, it ends at the property line at a tangent. And under the zoning or the subdivision regulations, two forty, twenty-five A two, says provisions shall be made for the proper projection of streets to adjoining property. That said, is that rather than that cul-de-sac coming to a point at the property line of the Leonard's, the subdivision right-of-way should come down directly to the right-of-way, so it butts right up to it. The issue that Mike and I talked about is that doesn't fit his cul-de-sac into that right-of-way area, so we were talking about the potential for maybe putting a T, a hammerhead at the end of that, rather than the cul-de-sac. So if, in the future, someone decides to extend the road onto the property and maybe make a one, a circle around and come back out some through someone else's property, it's there in place. But for the most part, it's a preliminary plan, it meets most of the standards, road radius is a little tight, as engineering will tell you when we get to the definitive plan, but for the most part, those are the only thing that I saw really outstanding about the preliminary plan that's been presented.
Okay, should we hear from the abutters first, or do you wanna speak, John?
I just have one question. Under this plan, if it gets approved, how does anyone get access to the lot in the back to do any restoration? Is there an easement, is there gonna be, I don't see anything on this plan, but...
Good question, as well, turn it over to Attorney Wall.
Good evening, through the chair, Mr. Druly, there's going to be an easement, our intention was to create the easement when the lots were deeded out, and that doesn't necessarily need to be on the plan, but we're happy to show it on the plan, and maybe it's actually a good idea, because the access is going to have to be by more than cars, there's gonna have to be some trucks that will have to go back there, so I'll talk to Mr. Borselli about what kind of width is required, and we'll show it on the, on the next plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, that was one question that I had, how are they gonna get back there? But the second question is, the statement was that those lots need to be sold to be funding for the restoration of the property. What guarantee does the town have if we approve the subdivision that the funds will actually be used to clean that up?
I don't know if the town has any guarantee, but what I can tell you is, is that the town, back, it's gone on quite a long time, back in the two thousands, this came to the town's attention, and the DEP became involved, and there's what's called a consent order, the DEP took enforcement action against the property owner, and there's an order that requires one of two things, that the dump, for lack of a better word, has to be capped in accordance with environmental controls, so that the groundwater is protected, or alternatively, it has to be all removed. And frankly, the capping is a lot less expensive than the removal, so I think the client intends to, rephrase that, I think they choose, they're gonna go with the capping route, and they're gonna use the money from the lots to do that, because they're under an enforcement order with the DEP.
I'd like to ask a question that's not terribly relevant, but what is a partition commissioner, is the applicant, what does that comply?
The petition to partition, yes, sure, I'm happy to explain that, the applicant's name kind of runs on for a long time. The subdivision that's shown on the screen is actually comprised of two different pieces of land, if I may, I could use the mouse, right? This is partially right there, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a... So, there's a piece of land here that is owned by, it's in a trust that's two brothers, I believe, own it. And then this other piece, this whole other piece, is owned by some family members. And what happened was, I'm sure the people that have been in town for a while might remember, it was called Five Star Enterprises. That's, that's the dumping that occurred there. The proprietor passed away.
I was wondering.
And the family members inherited it. And the two brothers that are part of this ownership also have an interest in the, in the other. I think there's five or seven family members. And to be frank about it, they don't get along, and they can't decide on what to do. And so, there's a legal mechanism that if, if, let's say I inherit a piece of property with a sibling of mine, and we don't see eye to eye, you can petition the court to partition the land. And in the old days, when the family inherited a farm, they literally, the court can partition it and divide it into different pieces. So, I might get half, and my brother might get half. But when the land itself can't be partitioned physically, the court appoints a commissioner, and that's who Mr. Vaughn is. He's an attorney out in Nantucket that was appointed to be the commissioner. And he's actually in charge of disposing of this land and then distributing the money to, to the people that are involved in the land. And the property, the reason we're doing this is Mr. Vaughn did put the property on the market, but because of the liability of the dump, there was no action on the property. And so, our proposal is to create this subdivision, sell off the lots to create value, to then deal with the dump. And that's why this, the lot here is a separate buildable lot, to make it separate and different from, from the lots that are being sold. And lastly, it's a long-winded answer. The reason why the brothers are offering to combine the land is because it creates value. We can get four lots, knock on wood, hopefully, through, through this board to generate the money necessary. Whereas if they didn't contribute the land, we might get two lots or something like that. So, it's an elaborate plan to deal with a couple of different problems.
Thank you. I thought it was something like that.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could go back to Pat's point? I'm looking at the drawing, and it, it doesn't appear to have room for an easement wide enough for trucks and still have room for the houses.
Well, it will have to, so we will go back to the drawing board. I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Borselli about where we can show that. It doesn't have to be over the road, right? It can be up along the property line. You know, something like, coming here, going up back there. You just have to provide some means of access. It's relatively flat land, so topography's not really a problem.
Just for a sense of scale.
Each one of these circles is a hundred and fifty feet in diameter. So, conceivably, you know, there could be an easement that runs straight through. Or it could be an easement that runs along the property line. So, there's ample room to create a truck lane to get back there.
If I could make a suggestion? I would think, considering what they're doing and what's back there, likely the best location for that easement would be down in the center of the property.
Understood.
Not to either side, because it would line up with Adeline.
Yeah, too. And it would also respect the neighbors. Understood.
Would the abutters like to speak? Yep, would you come up here and introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to ask some questions that have been on my mind since I moved here in 2013. At that point in time...
Can you ask, sir?
Sorry?
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dr. William R. Funk III. I live at three fifty Old Barnstable Road, Unit Six. By happenstance, I became the chairman of the Fairway Meadow condominium trust. It is not something that I signed up for.
Congratulations.
The previous president sold up, and I had seniority on the board, so... I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not representing the board. When we acquired our property, there was some real estate ease about the adjoining, quote, rainy property, end quote. And that it had had a checkered past. And because of that checkered past, we were given no details nor nowhere to go to ask. It was quite probable that the land would never be developed. Well, here we are today, and there's a proposal to develop this land. And newspaper articles I've had occasion to read from two thousand and five, so this is reporter data, it's not hard data, suggest that material buried here is buried forty feet below the surface. Well, I don't know how the reporter knows that. We all think there's junk under that dirt. And for some reason, the Department of Environmental Protection wasn't able to get relief from the owners of this property. However, many of the seven are all... I'm a little concerned because the family has a reputation in town, but I think this is important. So, my question, after all that background, is... Okay, we sell these four lots, and we get X dollars in revenue. What if it costs multiples of X to remove all of this? A. B, what concern, what confirmation do we have that all of it is out? Now, I'm a scientist by training, so I come up with some scientific ideas like, well, why don't we get some ground penetrating radar in here and find out how big the elephant is? If it's one car, okay. That's a one-car problem. If it's a half a dozen dumpsters filled with oil and paint and God knows what, that's a much bigger problem. So, my concern is, I don't think the revenue generated by the sale of these four lots is going to take care of that problem.
I mean, it was stated that they're planning to cap it.
They're cap it, they're not going to remove it.
Well, they're capping, okay. What does capping mean? According to DEP, you have to have a liner in the basin. And that wasn't done. We don't have any documentation to show that it was done. The DEP has stopped. So, I've said quite enough, and thank you for your time.
Raised good questions. You do, okay. Could we hear from this? Oh, all right.
There you go, I'll zoom in on it. Who else is buried in the body? You said bodies.
So, just as a matter of clarity and disclosure, I want to make sure the board understands what my role here is, is I was retained by the client with regard to the petition to partition. And we came up with this idea to develop the land to generate the money. So, I'm prepared to give some background information, very briefly, about the dump. But I want to make clear, I'm not representing the family in that regard. That's all closed out. So, what I can tell you, what I read in the file that was provided to me was that it was the Rainey family, it was Five Star Enterprises. It wasn't supposed to be an industrial use on that property. But Mr. Rainey, who's passed away now, did keep dumpsters there and trucks, and that's why I think that large building was part of the operation. And at some point, it came to the attention of the authorities, and he was ordered to stop doing what he was doing. There was an investigation, and there was a, there was a consent order with the DEP that I have a copy of, and it's very detailed. And it said, stop doing what you're doing, hire an engineering firm, investigate it, propose what you're going to do. And this plan was prepared by SciTech Environmental. This is an environmental report about what's in the ground, what kind of organics are there, what kind of gases it's giving off, and all, all that others.
Excuse me, is that in the public domain?
Yes, it's on file at the DEP. This is my only copy, but I'm, I'm happy to cooperate, you know, with you to help you understand what's there. Again, I didn't represent the client in any of this, this was handed over to me. And there's a, there's an order that after they stopped, investigated, hired professionals to figure it all out, then there was a plan developed to solve the problem. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not... All I can tell you is I read the DEP order, and it said, cap or remove. And there, there was excavation at the site, so that Mr. Rainey at first, and then another contractor, was excavating, taking the material out for, I, I think they were selling it or using it in landscaping or something like that. And then they were using the hole inappropriately to fill it in. And again, I can just share that by background information, what I read. I didn't represent the client at the time, and I don't represent the client in the DEP. As far as I know, it's all closed out, and it's a matter of compliance. And it hasn't been complied with because there's no money. And, and that's why we're coming forward with this plan to generate some money to tackle the problem. I, I hope it's enough, I don't know if it will be, but we're part of the team that's trying to solve, solve this longstanding problem.
Um, excuse me, no, this isn't the place for that. We're just hea- hearing from the people who are at the microphone, not a back and forth among people who are... I understand, and I understand your concern.
I can share the DEP file number and make it known so that maybe they could call the DEP about that.
Okay, and I'm glad you have given him that assurance, but it's really not our purview. So, I'd like to stop that part of the, the discussion, and we'll move along to the things that do come before the planning board, but, and you two can work together, but somewhere else.
Certainly, Madam Chair. If I may just, the last comment I want to make is, when we were here before the board on the A and R, Mr. Drewley did ask where the dump was, and he said to come back prepared to tell, tell them. And this is it, this is the SciTech plan, and this is the area that they determined. It does say approximate, but it was, it was, this plan comes from this, this report. And so, that's, that's where the experts say that it is. And, and we, we were conservative. The plan is not up, but Mr. Borselli essentially used this line, right, Mike? Okay, we're, we're even further back, so that just in case it's larger than shown on the plan, we, we were conservative in our, in our, leaving the unbuildable parcel large enough to be sure that the entire dump was in that piece. Thank you.
Yes, you're ready?
My questions are less complex.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name's Don Fregone, and I live on three fifty Old Barnstable.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you, your name is...
My name is Don Fregone, and I live on three fifty Old Barnstable, which abuts this. And my question is, there are four plots. What can be built on these plots? I, maybe it's a zoning question, I don't know, but is it a, can duplexes? Can they be condo buildings? Are they individual buildings?
Mike?
The plan at the moment is single-family dwellings. Just individual residential lots, one acre plus, more than one acre size lots with single-family dwellings. That doesn't mean that it could change, but there's always other opportunities to do other things, but that's the plan at the moment.
Do we have any other questions? No, this, Paul, Pat, no?
I do have one, but I don't know that it can be answered at this point because we've been told that the family would choose to cap the landfill. Let's call it a landfill, a dump, I don't care what you call it, okay? Once it is capped, right now it's designated as not a building lot. Once it is satisfactorily capped, can something else be put there? Because I think these people would be looking for assurances, too, that it's done, finished, it's never buildable. But can something else be put there?
So, the question is, can capped land become buildable?
Buildable or usable in some way, like a solar project. Exactly. That's why I'm asking.
So, that's a really open-ended question. I, I, I'd never like to say never or always or anything like that.
Neither do I.
What I would suggest to you is that there won't be any frontage. You know, the, the easement will be a means of access for purposes of, I'm working on the landfill. But to develop the property with any kind of use would require frontage, and there won't be any.
So, the easement would be limited only, and then it would go to the property owners, and there would be no access?
There'll, there'll be this limit, there'll be an easement access, but as far as, you know, if some, let's say if somebody were to come forward with a proposal for the solar farm, it would be a use of land. And the planner, Mr. Bot can correct me if, if I'm not saying this correctly, but the permit applicant would come before either zoning or the building inspector or, or you. And there would be no frontage, because an easement does not provide frontage. And hence, the lot, the lot's essentially being forced into unbuildable nature because we're cutting off all the frontage. And we're not, we're kind of doing that on purpose, but it's also a function of, of the, the proposal to get the four lots, we had to render it not buildable.
I have a point of information question also. Capping land, having the easement, they've got a consent agreement. Is that bonded so that if the, the work isn't accomplished as planned, there's some surety that it can be completed?
What I can tell you, Madam Chair, is that the consent order has some very vigorous fines and penalties. And again, I don't represent the client in this, so I, I can't tell you, I can't represent to you exactly what the status is, but I can tell you that there's a five hundred dollar per day violation. They can, they can create a maximum penalty of twenty-five thousand per day, per offense. So, basically, it's really in the hands of the DEP to, to enforce it.
Well, how long has it been in their hands? It hasn't been enforced.
A long time, and this...
So, have they paid off?
This consent order is dated two thousand and four. But I think what part, I mean, we all know the family that we're talking about. Mr. Rainey died, and then this, the family members inherited it. They don't get along, it's at an impasse. And so, we're trying to do something to create the money necessary to move it forward.
So, that type of enforcement isn't working, you're saying?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
That type of enforcement, the fines and so forth, doesn't have an effect?
It hasn't reached its outcome, I can agree, agree with that, yeah.
Okay, I think we're gonna...
I got the question.
Oh, Paul?
Would you be willing to provide the reference to that environmental report by SciTech to the planning office?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
The intro, I'd like to read that.
Yeah.
And Tom?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the, the plans that Mike showed earlier just showed the lots. If we go back to the full plan you see in your plan of the lot at the back that Attorney Wall stated is not buildable because there's no frontage, which is absolutely true. The plan also says that that lot at the back is not a buildable lot. So, without, in the absence of frontage, it's dirt. Hopefully, some vegetation.
Just a common sense of...
I did show a key...
Oh, sorry, Mike.
I did show a key map, and, and a portion of it is shown on this larger-scale, not a building lot.
All right. Thank you.
But it could be combined with a lot in front and gain frontage. And then, I mean, with, it's the same ownership, right?
Yeah, there's nothing that says you couldn't come back with an A and R plan and erase that lot line.
I just want to point that out to everybody, there's no guarantees here.
But, but I'll say this, but I'll say this, typically, what you can put on a piece of land is based upon the extent to which it's cleaned up. So, a lot of times when you've got, and this happens a lot with, with, you know, gas station sites or industrial sites, the site can be cleaned up to the extent that it's not toxic anymore, and you might be able to put a, a parking lot on top of it. Maybe you could put an industrial building on top of it, but you likely couldn't put a playground on top of it, or a ball field, or housing. And that's typically from that, 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 that chapter, that, that, that environmental review that comes with the property. And if you tried to, I think, I would like to think most banks would say, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're going to loan you any money for that property.
Have, have you agreed on a date to continue to?
Uh, we haven't.
To...
So, are we, are we going to move forward with the, the changes to the right-of-way extension and the hammerhead?
We could, or we could just take it under advisement and file a definitive and work out those details at the definitive stage. Either way, I don't know that we need to come back. We could just take into account your comments, and if there's any val... I don't know if there's a lot of value coming back with another version of the plan. there's a lot of value coming back with another version of the preliminary.
Well-
No, there isn't.
Yeah, well, let me say this one, when I've done this before, where if we, and the issue is, if you approve, if you disapprove a subdivision plan in Massachusetts, you say, "The planning board denies this subdivision plan because it doesn't have," I'm going to make something up, you know, caterpillar sprinklers in it. When the applicant comes back and puts caterpillar sprinklers in, they're essentially have, the reason they were denied, they get, come back and get their plan approved. So if the planning board said, "No, we are going to deny your preliminary plan because you didn't have this frontage there," you know, you could do that, or you could say, you know, "We approved this preliminary plan with the extension of the right-of-way to that point." So we could condition the approval of the preliminary plan with a particular point in mind, you know, the driveway, the right-of-way should be extended to the property line. And at that point, when they comply with that, then they would have their plan approvable. So I don't want to, as we just talked about, it would be nice to spend the money to clean up the site. No offense to Mr. Borselli, because, you know, he's got a boat payment to make too. But, you know, I don't necessarily need to have him come back here, but I like to see things in a sort of a settled state. So it falls in your court as to what you want to do. But you could say, yeah, we'll, we approve this definitive plan, or with this particular requirement, or we deny this preliminary plan because it doesn't have this particular requirement. The effect is, it's still a preliminary plan, and it still doesn't go anywhere until they come back to you with a definitive plan within seven months. So if they don't come back within seven months, the clock starts over on the 135 days. So we can just, you know, we can prepare a motion, I can talk to Mike about it, and come back in two weeks and vote on whatever that might happen to be.
I think that's the best course.
All right, so we're continuing to two weeks, and the staff is writing a recommendation, a motion.
Thank you. Let's have a vote on that.
So continue to August 24th.
Continue to the 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. A point of information, Madam Chair, just before we move on, I'm not going to be here the 24th, because I'm going to be away. I don't think it's necessary for me, I think the technical questions can be answered by Mike. I would just ask if the board could see fit to approving it with conditions, as Mr. Bott saw fit, or give us the opportunity to continue and come back for this reason. The petition to partition is pending in the land court, and the land court is monitoring this process, not watching what you do, but I have to report periodically that we're making progress towards our goal. And I just would not want to have to explain to the court that it was denied. It would be helpful to the process if it were approved. And so if we can get an approval with conditions terrific, and if you don't feel comfortable with that, then Mr. Borselli will ask for a continuance the next time, so we address whatever concerns you have to get that approval.
Yeah, so if it's okay with the board, and I work with Attorney Wall to make sure we have the language that satisfy his needs and the board's needs, and then we come back in two weeks and vote to-
Approve with conditions.
Approve the definitive, the preliminary plan with conditions.
That would be great, because I have to send a status report to the land court judge to establish that we're making progress, so thank you.
And I think Mike can handle it, two weeks, he's a pretty good guy.
I'm sure he can handle it. He tells me what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Paul? Next on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing on an article that we're hoping to have on the, on the warrant for approval at town meeting in November, and it is our proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay district. This is a hearing on something we've already held several hearings on, and might be our next-to-last hearing on this. We, there have been changes, there have been meetings. The changes at this point are not, they're technical changes, more than anything else is the way I would characterize them. Would you agree with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. Jed Kornok is new assistant town planner here in Flemish. I'm going to go through the changes that you just highlighted. Included in your packet is a brief summary of those changes. I'm just going to jump right to the definitions, or I'm sorry, the development requirements section, that's where the, most of the changes occurred. Briefly, what we did, through the subcommittee meeting, I believe that was held on the 5th of August, we discussed adding in a procedure element here, and those items are listed on the screen, A and B. The first is simply just referring that all of the applications or plans that would be submitted from developers who choose to use this bylaw, or this overlay bylaw, would have to follow the requirements set forth in site plan review. And item B indicates that notice to abutters would happen within a 300-foot area. That will trigger a change to the site plan review bylaw, because currently that lists 100 feet, but we'll get into that in a little bit. The other item is G. We added, as you can see on the screen, at the time, we were uncertain as to what the non-residential parking requirements would be. So you can see that here, it's listed as, we put X space per X square feet of leasable area. The subcommittee decided that a one space per 300 square feet of leasable floor area would be, would be something they'd like to add in. So that new bylaw in your packet has one per 300. And we also skipped over it, but item F here is, it allows for an applicant to ask for a reduction in the residential parking requirements if a car-sharing program is provided and approved by the board. And that car-sharing program would be something like Zipcar. So folks would be able to reduce the residential parking requirement. And then, the last item is K, you can see it on your packet. We simply just truncated the sentence here. It says, "In reviewing proposed developments under site plan review, the planning board may reduce the requirements concerning the bulk of structures, setbacks, parking, and building coverage," and so we just ended that sentence there. We took out "to allow for additional housing units beyond what would be otherwise permitted." That's the main adjustments that were made. We also removed a lot of the underlying that was included in the bylaw that folks saw at the last, at the last meeting, and we made change to, I'm just going to scroll up really quickly, the definition of three-quarter story. It's just to make it consistent with the half-story, which is included in the bylaw, definitions section of the bylaw currently.
So Jed, I wonder if you wanted to comment? So you're agreeing the changes that we made were technical for the rest of the board? John, Jim, and I were at that meeting with Tom and Jed, and Eric was there, and so it's not new to us, but I wonder if the others of you have questions about any of those changes?
No, I have a comment, though.
A comment, okay, go ahead.
Again, being persnickety, under 261G, parking requirements, you've got parking requirements 2, 4. Take out 2. So it reads parking requirements 4, any other uses, not included in this bylaw.
Did that show up in the clean copy?
Yeah, it did. That's why it's-
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, John?
Do you want to address what Mr. Turk had sent to us over the weekend?
Um, yes, I'd like to address several of the things that have been sent to us. Yeah, go ahead.
Under number K, the board may reduce the requirements concerning bulk of structures, setbacks, parking, and building coverage requirements. According to Eric, under the state's new guidelines, the development as of right, which is what this is, that may proceed under a zoning bylaw without the need for special permit variance, zoning amendment, or other discretionary zoning approval. He feels that if we leave that sentence in there, that we could run afoul of the new as-by-right definition the state has.
Okay, let's look at it again. So this is K?
K. We were just trying to give the planning board a lot of discretion.
Yep.
And I think we probably don't need to do that. We have very well covered the rest of our guidelines here.
So the sense is to just knock out K completely?
Just eliminate it, yes.
Jim?
I agree, if we're going to lose it, but I was just wondering, could we solve the problem if the applicant had options to do slightly different things that were already either/or, that he could do? It's just, I'm just afraid of just everything's, everything will be the same, you know, it has to be this way. And part of good planning is to have some changes in the way buildings look, and frontages, and I just don't, are we just going to create?
Well, we're going to do that with the site plan review and design review, but we're going to have the setbacks, which we already have in here. And we were trying to give a little bit-
Same issues could be dealt with in site plan review, is what you're saying.
Right, and part of that sentence says that there's additional dwelling units, but we're already giving, we're already-
We need to do additional.
We're maximizing that part of it, so.
Good luck to get 20.
And we discussed this when we, when we were here, just a few days ago, and agreed that we already have that under site plan review.
Right.
We didn't, we didn't need-
Okay, if it's, if we have it under site plan review, then I'm all set.
I think we should just eliminate K and-
Okay, so what we're eliminating is, just to be-
Print it and get it passed.
To be clear, K is, "In reviewing the proposed developments under site plan review, the planning board may reduce the requirements concerning the bulk of structures, setbacks, parking, and building coverage requirements." And we're saying, take out this may review, the permission to review, we have permission to review under site planning, so we don't need it.
That's the point, we already have it, is what you're saying.
Right.
Right, we don't need it, so.
So then it's superfluous language, it's just going to get us in trouble.
Exactly.
Okay, now I'm with you, and now I understand. If you're saying we already have that-
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but we know that we, we know that we have in site plan review, we have that permission anyway.
Right, and we don't want to run afoul of the new as-by-right bylaw that the state issued in January.
Right.
If I may?
Go ahead.
We, internally, we talked about having another subcommittee meeting after this hearing. Perhaps the staff could look deeper into that issue as well, and we could come back at that subcommittee and provide a recommendation.
Could we, because it remains a sticking point, right? And we are hopeful, just so that we all know the schedule we're on, we are hopeful, we'll have one more staff meeting, and we'll have one final public hearing, but that will wrap it up, so we're in time for the warrant.
Correct.
Okay, so-
In fact, we would actually suggest an additional subcommittee meeting after the final-
Oh, after the final. Hmm. Okay, Pat?
Yeah, I have a couple of other little things that I didn't pick up until the cleaned-up copy. Under A, 261A, site plan reviews, should that be plural of the town code? I don't know, and I didn't look it up, as to whether there are several site plan reviews that are different, one from another.
Sure.
Under the town code, so it's kind of a question. And then, the other one is under J, the second line down, it says 10 feet rear yard setback period, and then per rent, you want to take that period out of there.
Good catch.
And where was my plural reviews at, Pat?
Um, that was up under A.
Okay, I see it. Okay.
I didn't figure there was more than one site plan review under the town code, but yeah.
Oh, we have other comments have been sent in to us.
Well, before we get to those, can we scroll down and just show the revised map? So we had Bob Shea revise the map to take out the areas that we did not have.
Sure, I'm just going to go to the website.
That's perfect, because that's where we like to send people to. So the revised bylaws posted on the website, including the maps as well.
So on the planning page, if you scroll down, it's the first link. And this is the clean copy of the bylaw with all of the changes that we just went through.
Something has happened to the way things were sent to the planning board and are downloadable now from the website. They're on something called Adobe Document Cloud, some new app that I don't have, and don't want to pay $14.95 a month in order to have it, so I'm wondering if we could have things sent as they used to be.
We can do that.
That would be nice. And on the website also, because I bet that Adobe Document Cloud is a new wrinkle many people don't have.
Yeah, we'll just send you the PDFs, the documents.
Yeah, would you?
And so this is the revised map. It basically eliminated those B, two parcels that we talked about at the last meeting. And by eliminating the parcels that were in Woods Hole, we're able to make the map a little bigger, just for readability. So all the things that we eliminated prior to are now reflected on the map that's on the website.
Just a question, what Charlotte said, I know getting us the PDFs, does that mean the public still is going to be required to buy new software to read these things?
No.
No, because most of the things we've got posted are on the website.
They're, but as PDFs, not, okay.
Yeah, I don't know that if you click on those PDFs, that they're going to have you buy some other software. That'd be, I think that's the cloud that we've been using when Melinda sends out the information to you. So we'll make sure you've got the PDFs and the information we sent to you.
Because that wouldn't really be an open meeting to make them spend $15 a month.
Absolutely. Adobe Reader is a free download for anyone who wants to have it, so it'll allow them to view it, they just won't allow them to edit it.
In other words, you're downloading documents you can't really use. You can't even separate them. There's no way to, well, we can do this without a meeting.
Right. Good point.
Yes. I'd like to look at the things that the public sent to us, if we're done with the map.
So we've got two things. One is a letter from the Energy Committee that I'd like to read into the record, it's very brief.
Yep.
We've covered some of these things before, but the Energy Committee works really hard at these things.
They do.
So I would like to, you know, give them a full airing of what they, what they had to say, although we've talked about how some of these things aren't quite zoning, but let me, if I may. So this is 81021, "Dear Chairwoman Harrison, members of the Flemish Planning Board, the Flemish Energy Committee would like to submit comments on the proposed bylaws for mixed-use residential and commercial overlay district. The Flemish Energy Committee would like to call your attention to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change IPCC report issued just days ago, which raises a code "Red for Humanity" quote. Alarm and indicates that we have waited too long to take action to reduce emissions, that we are accelerating the warming and disruption of the climate. We would also like to direct your attention to the state's legislation that was passed earlier this year, that requires Massachusetts communities to follow the decarbonization roadmap to achieve net zero energy affordability for all, and the Commonwealth's Emissions Outlook, which indicates that emissions from small businesses and households need to be cut by at least 50% by 2050 to meet the state's goal of net zero emissions by 2050. Members of the Energy Committee recommend that capital investments be made upfront by developers to ensure that the spaces are designed to be healthy for the occupants, reduce energy and cost, and be more resilient in a disruptive climate. We suggest that some additional provisions be included in Section 240-261 Development Requirements of the proposed bylaw. In an appropriate point, provide language that stresses the importance of orienting roof structures to have a south-facing roof for solar access. We also stress the importance of making new construction, including solar energy systems to provide onsite electricity, be more resilient, and stabilize the occupants' energy cost, and that the residential units meet the guidelines of EPA's Home Health Initiative, Healthy Home Initiative. Requiring that buildings do not include combustible appliances is critical to improving air quality indoors and reducing greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change and disrupt the health of local ecosystems. According to a recent report by the Rocky Mountain Institute on Indoor Air Quality and the Use of Gas Stoves, it was noted that combustion of gas can lead to indoor air quality that would be illegal outdoors if measured by EPA standards for carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide. Gas stoves, especially ones that are not calibrated to burn cleaner and are not well-vented, produce high levels of nitrous oxide and carbon monoxide, which have serious health implications, especially for children. Check out MRI Report, Gas Stoves and Air Quality Solutions, and there's a link in their letter, to learn more about this important work and what we can do to address the problem. In Point D, we reference parking spaces. We recommend that the site be established to receive or include bidirectional electric vehicle chargers that can both charge vehicles and provide stationary backup power to dedicated soc- and provide stationary backup power to dedicated circuits during times of emergency, or to support utility-directed grid management to avoid brownouts and blackouts. On Point I, with references Title V compliance, we recommend that pervious surfaces, rain gardens, and native plantings be considered as tools for mitigating surface runoff to reduce nitrogen loading from mixed-use developments. Thank you for your opportunity to provide comments, sincerely, members of the Falmouth Energy Committee, Megan Amser, Alessandro Bochinelli, Rosemary Drager Carey, Ellen Erlang, and Matt Patrick.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to say, um, these are excellent things, but when we were discussing them, which we have, um, it, it seemed to us that these really, um, need to be kept in mind for all new developments, not just for this one, that it'd be more appropriate to address them in a different way, rather than attaching them to the multifamily, uh, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, they, they are general. Several of them actually are included in either language in our landscaping, which would be the last point, about, uh, pervious surfaces, and in site plan review, where we, uh, are instructed to consider how to make these, um, whatever new structures there are, better for solar energy. So they're already covered in another place partially, and in order to cover them fully, they really should apply to more than a single overlay district.
And, and some particularly on the, uh, on the drainage and things like that are already sort of contained, as well as solar orientation in the site plan review that we do. Uh, there is also, uh, a, a letter from, uh, Mike Galasso-
Yes.
Regarding the SROs, the micro-units that he talked about previously. I don't have a copy of that, I think I gave all the ones I had away. But Mr. Galasso's point was, let's make sure that we're allowing to have smaller units, and I think as we've talked about before, there, there's no prohibi- prohibition on the size of the units.
There isn't, I think it's all set, he's talking about something that doesn't exist.
Yeah, well, like, he, he sent us a letter, so-
He wants to be sure, but, that's-
So you could, you could, you know, you could build the unit the size that the market's looking for.
Right, and he also wants to include more of a required, a larger amount of affordable housing, and we've given an incentive for a larger amount, but not a requirement. So we've partially addressed what he wanted. Mike has paid a lot of attention to this bylaw, and his support is going to be terrific in working it through town meeting, so I, I really appreciate all the effort that he's gone to, and that the Energy Committee has gone to. Thank you. Anything else we'd like to say tonight about our new bylaw?
Other than that, it's continued to its final hearing on August twenty-fourth.
Do we need a motion for community hearing?
Can I say something?
Oh, sure.
My name is Michael McGrath, I am a, uh, Registered Professional Landscaver, but I'm also a environmental engineer, and I hold a patent where I have reduced contaminants of emerging concern from wastewater. And, uh, what I will tell you is that, uh, George Hoifell has done some, um, interesting work about Title V systems. And one of the major thing that a Title V system does is that the, there is very little carbon dioxide that gets emitted from that wastewater, so it actually goes into the ground, and what actually happens is that it sets up long-term attenuation from Title V septic systems. So, what I urge you to do is go slow, because I keep hearing people wanna add wastewater treatment, and it's enormous amount of carbon dioxide is emitted from wastewater treatment the way that it's done traditionally, when they add air to a unit. And so, uh, I would urge you to keep in mind that a Title V system does work, and does work very well. And, uh, it does, uh, in fact, George has published a paper that George Hoifell, so you, you may wanna consult him, but we ought to focus on carbon dioxide, because it's come up twenty-five percent in the last, uh, twenty years, something like that. So, um, I just, it is a greenhouse gas, and it can be very bad in the long run for mankind. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to continue the public hearing on the mixed-use salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're to McSweeney.
All right, if I may, Madam Chair? So, uh, we had a fair amount of activity over McSweeney, over the weekend, in fact, up until about probably eleven-thirty today, when we were talking with Falmouth Engineering again, uh, and I, uh, Falmouth Engineering Division, and I think we're essentially at, uh, we, we finally have, have got the information that we, uh, need on the site distance. The plan that was provided, that I think, uh, Bob Ament emailed to us on Friday, after books went out, included the site distances that, uh, the Engineering Division has been looking for. So we have that information in place, the one thing we don't have on that plan is identifying the obstacles that may be within the right-of-way, uh, that would need to be removed to clear some of that space. So we've gotten some pictures that have been provided, uh, in talking with, uh, Engineering today, um, the, the question that came up was, well, whose job would it be to remove whatever those obstacles might happen to be that are in the road right-of-way? Now, in the case of the property, uh, the road right-of-way directly in front of the McSweeney property, uh, the applicant, uh, went to the Highway Department and said, "We wanna clear this space to create a better sightline." They got permission to do that, and they didn't need to get a tree hearing, because some of the trees were diseased and things like that, so they could proceed quite rapidly. In the case of, uh, having the engineer identify those obstacles that are in the site, try, the site distance he's identified on the plan we have in front of us, uh, it's a matter of, these are the things that have to come out of the way in order to achieve that site distance. So who goes about and does that work? Serendipitously, when we're having this conversation with, uh, the, our DPW department, uh, they checked in with the Highway Superintendent, who does send out periodic letters when people complain about things and say, "I can't see because this bush has grown up." So, the Highway Superintendent is preparing a letter, 'cause he's repairing these other ones, to send to the folks who have some things that are likely in the way, at least what we've seen from the pictures. So, uh, we are sending a letter out to folks who have vegetation that's grown into the right-of-way, but we don't necessarily know, understand what all those things are. So we've asked, uh, DPW of sending out a letter, and basically it says, "Excuse me, uh, Ms. Kerfoot, uh, your, your, your gardenia is, uh, is encroaching on the road right-of-way, can you trim it back?" Uh, and if she opts not to, then the town, uh, can say, "Well, we'll do it for you." Maybe not without the love and care of Pat, 'cause I've seen her yard. So, we're having this conversation about what it may need to be cleared to achieve that right-of-way, sight distance. So we know that it's achievable, likely, uh, it just needs to be identified specifically what's in the way on the plan, uh, and just be required as a condition, uh, for the approval of the development. I think most of the other things have been put to bed, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jed, uh, 'cause Jed put together a memo, basically recapping what we had talked about with engineering, and I might've got some of those things wrong. But I think we're at the point where most of those technical issues have been identified, other than what exactly has to come out of the road right-of-way to achieve that distance, and who's going to go about doing it. In the conversations that Bob and I had, uh, I'm gonna say today, yes, Monday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, thank you. Uh, we're, um, you know, to, 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 to what extent do we get to those things, and how do we go about, uh, clearing those things up? So, I think we're pretty much at a position where if the board is comfortable, uh, they could direct staff to prepare a positive motion for this development, uh, with the condition about identifying what that site distance is, and addressing that site distance, those obstacles that are in the way. And in the conversation that we had, it is, well, even if, uh, the planning board said, uh, you know, "This is fine," would the engineering department require that sight distance to give them a road opening permit for the road? So the good news is, is we understand that the sight distance is likely achievable, we just need to have whatever those things are in the line of sight identified on the plan, so we can assure for the record that those are the things that have to be removed, and I think we're in pretty good shape, uh, to move forward with the development. And Bob can, and, uh, Jed can explain all the things I explained poorly in, in giving that, uh, update to you.
Well, I am very glad to hear that. That is good news. I spent quite a while yesterday, um, over there also taking pictures, I even made a little movie, which will be difficult to share with everybody, um, of that, and there's something that really wasn't taken into consideration in anything I've heard yet. If you look, the issue is, coming out of the driveway that's going to exist there, and looking left, is this rhododendron up here in the way? Right there. And when you wait and watch the cars coming, I would, I would love to show you the little movie.
It's not on the boulder either.
Um, well, that, I'm not a tall person, that's the way it looks when you're in this place, looking that way, and because the road goes up and over the hill and curves and goes down, the cars have in fact become invisible before the rhododendron interferes with the view, because they go down the hill around the corner, and you can't see them. So the rhododendron is a terrific obstacle for the people in the Goodings Way coming out of it, but not for the people coming out of the proposed road for the cause.
So, and that is the role of the surveyor and the engineer, just shoot that line of sight and say, "To get this line of sight, these are the things that we see that have gotta come away."
I just wanna make a comment, I spent a lot of time reading all the notes from the engineers, and it, and the way they worded it made it seem like it, it just couldn't, we couldn't get the distances, and this isn't gonna happen. They should've said, what you just said tonight, that there's some obstacles that need to be removed, but it, it could be achievable, and we would've been, I would've been more meaningful than just say, you know, red line after red line, can't be done, can't be done, it almost looked like it was impossible, if I was reading their minutes, it was like, I said, "What's going on?"
Well, so, we got them information in the middle of the week, that they were reporting on, so their report is coming out-
Okay, so we're looking at all the-
As the new site plan is coming, and so, like I said, as of eleven-something today, we're on the phone with Engineering, and, and Scott is going, "Okay, we got the line of sight that we need, just what's the stuff that's in the way that's gotta come out to achieve that?"
So let me ask you this, uh, you're prepared to provide us for our next meeting with an approval with a finding, is that right? Not a condition but a finding?
As soon as the engineer shows what's in that line of sight that's gotta come out, so we can say, here's the, you, you can achieve that line of sight. And so, it's on the plan.
Do we need something further? We've just heard it's achievable, why do we need something further for us to give the approval? John?
Oh, I, I'm a little confused here, so if there's something in light of sight, does it have to be removed before we give approval, or before they put a road in?
We can just have a finding that they're going to.
Can I try to shed some light on this?
If it's on someone else's property, how can, how can the applicant-
Right.
-achieve that?
Can I shed some light on this, or try?
Bob wants to. Mr. I'm gonna-
Thank you, Charlotte. I don't know if, uh, board members have seen the plan that's, uh, on the right side of this screen, but this is the plan that was sent last week to, late last week, uh, to the town. And it, uh, shows the proposed McSweeney lane here, and it shows that one can achieve three hundred and thirty-five feet of sight distances, it's this lower dash line, and it shows three hundred and thirty-five feet on the plan, except that there is the plantings in this area, uh, next to the intersection of, of Goodings Way. Now, the town engineer, um, says that we need three hundred and thirty-five feet of sight distance to be, uh, safe. That's an arbitrary figure that would be applied to any road that doesn't have a speed limit. Apparently, this road doesn't have a, uh, a, a posted speed limit. It's got twenty-five mile an hour signs, but they're yellow, and the, apparently, they're not regulatory speed limit signs, so they don't count. Little bizarre, uh, but apparently, that's why we need three hundred and thirty-five feet instead of two hundred and eighty feet, which we do have. Now, I'd like you to look at this picture on the left, and it shows what Charlotte just said. You don't need to move, remove those rhododendrons to have safe distance. You don't need to do that, and this photo shows it. But what it's showing is the car that would be, and now if, go back to the plan, that's, this is the sight distance that in fact you have, and it's about, um, two hundred and eighty-something. It is enough. It is safe. You've seen it, Charlotte, any one of you have gone out there and looked, know that's the case. The photo shows it the case. The town engineer wants us to meet a different standard. At some point, the developer's going to say, "I have approval for five lots and five curb cuts." And I'm not gonna go to the expense of dealing with neighbors across the street and cutting down stuff on the other side of the street, on top of the expense of building a road which he doesn't need, except to make a better subdivision. He's gonna still have to have driveways off of that street, he can just have driveways off of Palmer Avenue, which he can do. We're allowing the perfect, the goal for the perfect, the goal to meet some arbitrary standard set by the state, getting in the way of the very good. The town's concerned about liability, "Oh, if we approve this, we're not meeting some state standard, then there's an accident and we'll be liable." So make findings. The finding is that we have five lot, A and R lots, um, by right, and that this is a much better, um, solution. But I also wanna show you this other photograph, and again, if you've been out there, um, you've seen it. And I'll try to get this right. And I really appreciate the help that, uh, town does in putting these photos, and this is the photo, come on.
Just drag it up. There you go.
Here's the view, looking out of Goodings Way. Clear that area on the town right-of-way, well within the town right-of-way, not because you need it for, uh, McSweeney Lane, because you don't. Clear it because this is a, a clear and present danger that exists right now, in the town layout, where it needs to be cleared. Now, what the process is, send letters to, um, neighbors, say, "Will you please remove these things?" Maybe, I don't know how that works, whatever it takes. The town should do it, it should not be the responsibility of, of, uh, McSweeney. Make the findings that this can be done, and the town can do it. Make a finding that the town, that the planning board recommends that the town do it. And, and then approve this plan without requiring us to do this, to make sure that the developer decides he'll do this plan, and not give another reason for him to get fed up with the process. I've quickly estimated that the annual taxes, when the, from these houses to the town, will be around forty-five thousand dollars, or, could be much more than that, but, something like that. The town can afford to do the clearing, and they should do the clearing, and this is why they should do the clearing. So, this is our fourth hearing on this plan, which is five lots, where we already have five lots approved, where two of the lots could be approved A and R. It's a good plan, and, um, I think Mr. McGrath has submitted everything he thinks he needs to, apparently, just about all the technical stuff that the, uh, Engineering Department is seeking. I urge you not only to give that instruction to Tom, to draft a positive motion, not to include a requirement that the developer do this clearing on the opposite side of the street in the town- in the townway. And we really should have, not the waivers we've talked about, but some of the technical waivers that have been referred to in the, in the engineering's report. And we'll, and we'll be done. That's what we, we really would like to have. Thanks.
Mike, you'd like to speak?
Oh, I just didn't make some of the things. This is a small subdivision. The engineering department requests that there be an outside consultant to do the inspections. Come on.
I sense that the board is with you.
If I may, after my, after mine.
What I like to do is give you a chart that the town of Falmouth has prepared. My fingers are too thick.
Thanks, Mike. It's the time of the night it could be either.
Oh, I got an extra one.
Mrs. Driveway.
There's an extra one.
Do you want, do you want the extra?
Sure.
Two photos?
If you refer to this diagram, this is a, tells you how to create sight distance. And if you look at it, we have, basically, we're very close to the top, the top diagram. And if you get down below, it tells you the length of sight distance legs and feet for different design speeds. I gave you a photograph, there's actually two photographs, that show you that it's posted as 25 miles an hour. Instead, I'm told that it's not 25 miles an hour, it's 30 miles an hour. Apparently, the town doesn't have the right kind of permit for 25 miles per hour, is apparently what they're saying to me. I wouldn't know that. So I've been criticized over the design. The bottom line is, then they say, go down to 30 miles an hour. And it says, left turn, I need 335. And what they're telling me is I need 335 in both directions. So one of the things you ought to be alarmed at is that, see that clear area? There's supposed to be nothing in there except grass. So, we are going to have to, we have a permit. We're going to have to remove most of the trees that are in that area that is in the clear area because that's what they want. We have cut down the brush so you can go out. And I've gone out and looked. I wrote to an opinion that there is proper sight distance. Then there was an objection that I didn't go and measure what a car would see. So what I did today is I parked a truck at the center line that's clearly marked. And then I, I measured and there's more than sufficient stopping distance for cars coming to see this sight. So, as I said before, I've never seen so much work by a government agency on a little five lot subdivision. So I urge you to vote whatever requirements there are. Now, you probably don't know it, but Philip D. Holmes was, for a while, the consulting town engineer of Mashpee. And when he was on vacation, I was the consulting town engineer for Mashpee for probably six or seven years. I'm very much, during that time period, we went to training. One of the things that is, that is not well known is that the town cannot be sued for a highway defect unless, unless someone tells them about a highway defect. So I go to Goodings Way and I stop and I look to the left. You can't see this picture. If you go out and go to leave Goodings Way, there's very little sight dis, distance to the left. So the town ought to go out and clear it and go out and do it now. Because the law is very specific that they don't have liability unless they've been given notice. And that is very dangerous. Thank you.
The owners on that road know it because they've mounted a mirror across the road so that they're able to see both ways through the mirror because they don't have the sight distance.
And I, I just want to add one thing. I'm not an engineer and so I don't, I have the greatest respect for the town engineering department, for Scott Schluter. I have a lot of respect for Mike McGrath. I don't know what the answers are, whether, and I don't, and I'm not an expert on the state regulations applicable to some of these issues. I don't know whether it should be a 30 mile per hour design or whether it should be 25. I don't need to find fault with anybody. I don't care what the answer to that is, really. But what is clear, put aside the technical, did you comply with this or that? Look and it's safe. And we want the developer to do this project and not the five lot A and R. And let me add also, there's been continuous discussion, can you move, can you move that road? Mike says if we move the road, and the engineer says, you know, it might be the best spot, we just don't know that. Well, McGrath says that you won't gain sight distance by moving the road to the west. And what you do is you compromise the lots. The lots are good lots and it, there's not much gain. We've got it in a good location. It's very good. Is it perfect? Don't make it have to be perfect. The town is making a mistake when it tries to make it perfect.
We're ready for a motion. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion?
I, I just want to make a comment first. Do I go first?
No, no, go ahead.
So, if my memory serves me correctly, this board approved an A and R plan. And probably on that A and R plan, it says these lots are not an endorsement that they're buildable. Is that correct? Because I keep hearing that they can do five lots by right. And this is a state highway. So they'd have to get five curb cuts? Am I correct? Not a state highway? Okay. Well, anyway, I don't think that plan says that they can build them by right. There'd be a process to get five building permits here.
That may be so, but that's not what we're being asked to consider or approve.
No, but we're threatened with it.
No, I don't think that we react to this.
Well, it's a statement of fact.
That's how I hear it.
I think it was bad form to threaten us, but I think we can overlook that.
I don't disagree. I just want to clarify it.
Yes, I agree with you.
Can I add? It is a statement of fact that five A and R lots have been shown on a plan endorsed by the planning board. And that we held off recording that plan because we wanted to do this plan, it's a better plan. The standards for curb cuts are not the same for those individual lots as they are for this proposed road. Those lots will get a curb cut. They conform to zoning requirements and they're, there isn't really a question I mind about them.
We need another argument, actually. We've got enough input in here. Bob, did you want to say something?
Just that I've always looked at the recommendations for sight lines to be in a perfect world situation. Because if you look at half the roads that intersect with other roads in this town, I don't think hardly any of them would meet that criteria. I come out of Green Pond all the time and you've got a hill coming from Woods Hole and you barely have time, by the time you turn your head to look the other way.
Green Gate, not Green Pond, please.
Yeah, Green Gate. I'm sorry, Green Gate. To me, you don't have the sight line there, so.
It's deadly.
It's, and you can go through intersection after intersection. And yes, you try and make it as safe and as best you can. And I think that's what we need to look at, not to look at, is it perfect? Does it perfectly conform to the most perfect situation that exists? Because you're not going to find that anywhere.
Chances are, we can all think of the road that I come down in order to join Curly Boulevard or Shore Road or whatever you want. Call that road, it has three names.
Yeah.
You would have to get bulldozers in order to do any of this. It's an absolutely blind corner. And on the other corner, the neighbor has put in a lot of trees that now are dying fortunately and has a new owner, maybe they'll take them out. These situations exist everywhere. And the only way you could get to that perfect solution is to scalp the town.
And it's been my understanding when it comes to speed limits in heavily, in thickly settled areas, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. So whoever posted, was this some, a sign that some neighbor bought and stuck in the ground? I don't know. But, but that's what I understand it to be, is 30 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. And if it's posted, it's 25 miles an hour. If someone is going 40 miles an hour in that road, are they going to get pulled over and ticketed for going past 25?
Probably not here. Pat's ready to make a motion. Are you ready to hear it?
I would like to move that the planning board direct the planning, the town planners to provide us with a decision.
Positive decision.
Yeah, positive decision that would incorporate any of the waivers necessary. Any of the cautions that Bob was talking about that would be necessary. And that this be ready for us at our next meeting.
Second.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I say something?
You just gave me what you wanted.
Yeah, I don't think you need to.
We're done.
No, I, no, I don't think you need to.
No, I just want to say thank you.
Okay.
But I do want to go back to something that I made a motion at town meeting, I don't know, several years ago.
We'll listen.
I had a brother killed at a very dangerous intersection like this. And the town of Weymouth actually went back. I gave them a free survey and they actually fixed that intersection so it was not shaped like that. They put it in 90 degrees. The payback to the citizens of the town of Weymouth was five to one, meaning they spent $180,000 to prevent another accident like my brother's, which was over a million dollars. I said to the town, you ought to keep track of where the accidents are and then spend money on the intersections where the accidents are occurring. But we don't seem to be doing that. And if you want to serve the people of the town, we ought to be keeping track of those where the accidents are and then fix those accidents. I just ran into a friend of mine and he was very severely injured at an intersection. I wrote to the town saying, why don't you fix it? And they never have. So we need to, the, I understand it looks like insurmountable, but if you focus first on the most dangerous intersections, they are doing 151. They are doing that. But they're probably using the county or state money that comes to every town. But we ought to keep track of where the intersection accidents are. Thank you.
Charlotte, with your leave, I thank you also. But I do note that your motion, I don't think, gave instruction as to whether the need to clear.
It's not in the motion.
Okay, if that's clear, that that's not a requirement.
It's not there. I thought you would pick up on that. We don't want to get that instruction. So, we're, we're not through our agenda yet. There's more to go. And we have, we've got seven minutes to do it. So, discussions, form-based code update.
If I may. So I had a very nice conversation with our friends at Horsey and Witten, who have sent stuff on to Union Studio. And we expect to have a draft for the board and for the working group to look at by the end of next week. That said, I have advised the folks at Horsey, Witten and at Union Studio. And I want to make sure, and I don't think the board is going to fight me on this at all, that we would not be submitting anything for the fall town meeting.
That's for sure.
So I just want to let you know that we've got product coming out. But we, we need to have our work as hard as we can to get mixed use and recodification on the warrant for fall.
And I see we have recodification meetings coming up.
Yes. So I had a nice chat with Bob Mitchell today. As I said in the email that went out to the people, Bob is checking with Bob to see if Bob is available for the April, August 30th meeting or 31st meeting. So the working group is going to meet at the end of next week to power through some of these things. I am going to be curating the matrix to trim it down a bit so there's less, less enthusiasm from the working group to get through some of these things. Because we really have to get it on the warrant. If, even if we get it on the warrant and we get to October, we're not ready, we just have to move it. But it has to be on the warrant.
Okay.
We just cannot let this thing drag out anymore, so.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you very much. Any questions about what's going on? Have you had a peek at what they're doing or you'll first see it?
We've had conversations about the issues that they're coming across, but I haven't seen it yet. So they, between some paternity leaves and some other things, they've just, you know, they're like everybody else. They had, apparently they had a pandemic in their neighborhood as well. And we're trying to get a product out. So Nate tells me, talking to him last week, that end of next week, we should have something that we'll be disseminating to the working group and to the board members.
Excellent. Any committee reports?
I have one. Last night, the select board took up an issue with the transportation manager committee. The town manager had written a memo to the select board concerning some of the activities of the transportation management committee. And I won't go into all the details, but my takeaway was maybe five things. The name of the transportation management committee implies there's some kind of managerial option there and it's not. So they're going to change the name to traffic committee or traffic advisory committee, it wasn't clear. Secondly, they discussed the mission statement. Because in the opinion of the town manager, there's been mission creep, where the committee's gotten into activities that the purview of DPW. The board discussed this at length and felt that the mission statement was overly broad, but it was adequate and no changes were going to be made. There were concerns about, some of the criticism of individual town employees and whatnot. And that came up in a number, number of areas by various members of the select board. They talked about the frequency of the meetings. The meetings of the transportation management committee up till now have been quite frequent. With the select board, there've been presentations almost every other month. And they felt there was too many, that it should be more infrequent. Maybe once or twice a year even, which is, I think, very limited in my opinion. And last thing was the, the reporting requirement. Doug Brown is the liaison for the select board. And he's done a, in my mind, a very credible and yeoman's job of trying to keep things on track. And he was very supportive of continuing with what was going on now, but with some toning down and so forth. Previously, he had written a very critical memo about the operation on the annual review. And none of those things were taken seriously by the transportation management committee. He suggested even considering a new chairman. The committee voted to continue with the chairman with some proviso for a toning down of some of the criticisms. And the vice chair, Alison Leishen, was going to continue as well, although she had some very serious concerns at the last meeting. So I think there was an airing of a number of different things. And I think the, what the town manager is suggesting is that if there's an issue outside the purview in his opinion, it should go to the select board. For example, pavement assessment. For example, pavement assessment, there's a pavement assessment program that was done in another city, and they.
What kind of assessment?
Sorry?
What kind of assessment?
Well, assessing the, all the roads in town, looking at when they were built and whatnot. It's a, it's a fairly expensive thing to set up because you have to do a lot of work. And by that, you should be able to extend the pavement requirement, thereby save money, it can be used for other things. And he wasn't quite sure that should be part of it, but the committee wants to move forward. It could be a recommendation, that's all. But I think it was a, generally, an airing of, on all sides. And it'd be interesting to see the reaction of the Transportation Management Committee this Thursday to what happened. But I was, I thought it was very positive in the end.
Great. John, did you want to say anything about the Affordable Housing Committee? Are you going to the next meeting? We have all been invited to the next meeting to talk about our, Mr. Cod.
When is it? The 19th?
Is it the 27th, I think? Isn't that meeting of the Affordable?
I have it written down.
Yeah, I do too.
I think it's the 19th. I am not here. I'm not available. And that is before, so we got an email from Michael Galasso saying, "Stop the presses on Mr. Cod," to which I replied, "Well, the hearings continue to the 24th. The subcommittee has these meetings queued up, so we'll be talking to the Affordable Housing Committee before the hearing is closed." So he thanked me. I believe it's the 19th.
We can find out.
What is their issue with what we're doing with this?
They just want to chatter it up. They're the Affordable Housing Committee.
Do they have any problems with it?
Uh, that's why I go to the meeting, I guess.
It'd be nice if they'd let us know what their issues are.
I always tell, ask people to put things in.
They say they have any issues, Jim. Maybe they just want to be educated.
I always ask people.
I think they want to be supportive. I got the sense they want to be supportive. If we could be a little bit more aggressive about requiring affordable housing, that would please them. I think they understand our position. I don't think it's to criticize.
I don't think so either.
I could be surprised, but.
No, I think if they want to know what we're doing, they could come to our meetings.
It's two after nine.
Or require us to go to theirs, but.
It is the 19th.
Yep.
It's the 19th at 3 o'clock here in this building, I think. Any other committee reports? No? Announcements?
Sign these things.
Oh.
My announcement.
End them down. Okay, and our future agenda items while we're signing? John?
I'd like to add, our next meeting, a discussion about A and Rs. It'll be very short.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, where do I find my copy?
It'll be a two-minute discussion.
But still, we'll have it.
Maybe, maybe less.
Anything else for the agenda? Um, what are these? Oh, these things coming back for us.
Some people haven't signed them yet.
We didn't sign the top part. Sign the bottom part.
Sign both parts?
Well, some people do some doubt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. You assume all liabilities.
We don't. Yes, you have to sign.
Can I make a motion adjourned?
Um, yes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Nice, thank you.